Good afternoon, this is the TV September twenty 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 two. That's about ten after two. It's a special permission court that's called today. And I'm gonna call it order. We do have a forum here today. I was in the guest years and acknowledge them. And I'm opening it up for public hearing. We do have one request that's turned in by Mr. Kelly. And I think you wanted to talk on each item per item. Am I correct?
Number two, number five specifically, please, sir.
Number two and number five? Only?
Pretty much.
Okay, here no other public comments, so it'll be closed. Number one is deliberate and consider action on the foreign items. I want to discuss and probably prove three hundred and fifty dollars to pay Smith Funeral Home for cremation creation. Cremation fee for Jeffrey Bean. This is what the court has decided to pay for those services.
I make that motion there will be paid.
Do we need some other person?
Mr. Kelly, you said that you wanted to speak on item number two, and we're up to that point. And before the commissioner makes that decision, would you like to have your two minutes of input?
Yes, sir. I have two questions, one question, one suggestion. Based on the interlocal agreement was was done a few years back according to my understanding. It's a few years old. So citizens are asking me what that agreement was. I have no idea, and I can't I can't find it readily. The next question is, is if this is just going to be added to the interlocal agreement, then it would be requested that the court publicly show like the spreadsheet that was introduced today and outline what the agreement is for all citizens to be able to understand what's going on. Two, my only other my other question would be is which entity is actually going to handle the financials of in and out of new money coming in and out of this town, the commercial watchers? Who's going to track that? How is that going to be tracked? So it's always. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. What, Commissioner, what do you all decide on number two?
I make that motion, we go and counter partnership.
Here, second. So you put your EDA on a contributor?
Yeah.
I second considered question that was asked. Thinking, but he gonna respond to his question? No, I'm just saying that we You've taken in a situation of this question. Okay, motion been made by Mr. Benson, second Mr. White, we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Newton and Newton County for shares costing the message board at the corner of eighty seven one ninety as presented in the Michigan debate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sound, opposed. Here none pass. Number three is we're going to pass over that item altogether. Number four is discuss an appropriate through the Department of Newton County Judge Gump Weeks as administrator of the ARCA funds through December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Make good motion. I second. Motion been made by Mr. White, second Mr. Benson, that approve Judge Weeks as administrator of ARCA funds starting today through December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sound, opposed. Here none pass. Number five is discuss an appropriate. Oh, you didn't want you want to speak on number five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussing appropriate approval appointment of Newton County Treasurer Ginger Sims as administrator over the ARCA money beginning January one, twenty twenty three. Those, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Judge. Being judge of Newton County, it's been stated over and over that you the CFO of the county. I think it's disrespect disrespectful, but when your term is new judge does not contain does not take over the CFO. So I think this is highly inappropriate, has nothing to do with the ability from the treasurer or anything else. It's to respect the other position of judge and their position as CFO of the Newton County.
I don't usually respond, but I will respond to your statement, Mr. Kelly, that the intent as Mr. Cochran is not he is elect, not official yet, and we can't take action. But we will say that Ms. Ginger will be appointed to the the action of a different court.
According to all the respect, according to how you have a stated here, the county treasurer Ginger Sims as administrator over the ARCA funds beginning January one, beginning January one, the judge elects official term. That's his position, not anybody else's, the chief.
Exactly right, but he's still not elected official as sworn in yet. So I would suggest you pass over that item. Make a motion, we pass that item. Second. Motion been made and passed that we pass over on number five. In the all in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sound, opposed. Here none pass. Number six is discuss an appropriate payment of bills for September twenty one, twenty two, twenty twenty two, this year. I want to make a statement before we get started here, if you don't mind. We were sent out a statement where the bills were paid a couple of days ago. There were some items that we had sent in that's not on that item again at eleven. At one fifteen today, we were sent a corrected copy. But I haven't had time to even see if all the bills have been paid that we had put in. So is there any way that your office could supply us in time to where we could actually investigate or look over what we have sent in to where we could object or approve or whatever?
Yes, sir, we can do that. We just have to cut our bills off a little bit earlier to make sure that we'd get all the bills in and in time. I think there was something that we had an adjustment that were sent in wrong, and there was a few corrections. I think there's three or four corrections. So, yes, we can do that. We will get, I mean, do you want to go along with today's bill, or do you want to?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and I just want to make that statement
Yes, sir.
that I don't have time, and my ladies want me to look over it. And I've been busy as usual, and I haven't had time to look over them. So I don't know what's on there and what's not on there. I'm gonna take your word for it. I'm not saying you're not doing a good job or anything, I'm just
That was the problem. This week, but yeah, do you need a day or two before?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how long, give me a time, like the day before?
I'll tell you that.
In the morning, the morning before, I mean, how long is it going to take you to review the bills?
Yeah. If I had twenty four hours, that's good.
We're ready now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. General fund, three hundred two thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty eight cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct One, seventeen thousand thirty six dollars and seventy eight cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Two, thirty thousand eight hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty six cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, seven hundred sixty one dollars and thirty seven cents.
Sure. Or you you got the old one?
I have the little one, but
Because you read what without my adjustment, I'm just saying, excuse me.
Teresa gave me about four eleven in my office.
Mine should be sixteen thousand with the adjustment of this being taken off.
I'm gonna need to check on that. Because this is the one you just gave out, right? Because this is what she gave me, my little mom.
No, he did, no, he did not give.
Oh, that's why. He didn't get.
He still has an Alcott, we can issue why I got one. I didn't have time to make.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't get a new one. We didn't get we didn't get a copy for the one. Yeah.
Well, my point is she's saying the old one said, oh, seventeen thousand, my new one should say sixteen thousand.
The new one still says seventeen.
Yeah, this is the one she gave me, right?
It's still on there, I mean.
It's corrected. I know that she did some corrections on
It's two items.
Yes, on two items that were accidentally charged to your precinct that I
But it's still the same total, what I'm saying.
Well, when I get back to my office, I'll do the correction. So that means this sheet today, we will not be able to sign off. Present. Okay. Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, seven hundred sixty one dollars and thirty seven cents. Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, thirty dollars and fifty cents. Dedicated Road Precinct Two, thirteen hundred one dollar and eighty six cents. Record preservation, one thousand eighty four dollars and fifty one cents. Solid waste disposal, five thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars and seventy six cents. Voter registration, two thousand four hundred seventy six dollars and forty cents. Newton County Library, one thousand one hundred twenty one dollars and twelve cents. Historical operating, one hundred seventy five dollars. District Attorney, Country, Country Way, three thousand twelve dollars and thirty eight cents. courthouse emergency grant, fourteen hundred dollars. FEMA grants, eleven thousand dollars. Grants, twenty two thousand four hundred sixty six dollars and eighty four cents. Newton County Enterprise Facility, forty seven dollars and twenty five cents. And Technology Fund, four hundred thirty dollars and thirteen cents. For a total of all funds, four hundred one thousand three hundred seventy seven dollars and seventy four cents.
Right. So the difference that he's talking about, they call it, is the same amount goes from his to mine. So the total is still correct?
Yes, when it was sent into our office, it was sent in under precinct one, what it should have been to precinct two. But we had to make the corrections when she sent me the revised file.
And I wanted to see one of our rules five.
So that's going to be.
So now it's still not building, first one he's given to me.
Well, I don't know, she just brought it out, and it should have okayed immediately. So I know when I get back to my office, I'm gonna check because So I know, when I get back to my office, I'm gonna check, because all the changes were made, and she just printed this out. So I'm gonna get back to my office, but I'm gonna make sure and confirm. But the price is, as I said, it's gonna be just between the two precincts.
No, there's actually the one little hop in that.
That was already in there.
Stuck in the other one, so.
And that's $2,000.
That's about $2,000 or something. Something.
So that's not.
I'm just saying, the old one don't.
I'm gonna get back to my office. I'm gonna take care of that.
Okay.
You'll just send it to me.
Yes, ma'am.
A pain in the office, give it a try, just why not, you know? We should do that, just like.
Okay.
But the but the total will be 401,377.74?
Well, she's telling me it's gonna be an extra. So one, four, one, three, seven, seven is correct. So the change should have been made.
It should have, but it was not reflecting those two.
So I need to find out. It's like I said, when she made the changes in that data, it should immediately update me. When she printed out the new report, it should have showed the change. So I need to to get to see what's going on, because I know she made the change.
Do you want us to approve this, or just?
401,037.74.
And you're gonna make the additional changes within the precinct?
Within the precincts, yes, sir.
Whatever they made. I don't know what those are. That's what we're doing. Go later. I'll make that motion, provided we make the necessary changes and continue it to be a total of 401,337.74.
I second.
Motion been made, Mr. White, and second, Mr. Benson, we pay the bills of 4,000, $401,377.74. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. Here and on pass. I hear a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. Second.
Motion been made, Mr. Benson, and second, Mr. White, to adjourn at 2:30.